This time I'll call the meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers if he'd lead us in our board prayer, immediately followed by the edge of allegiance. Board members, please rise for your prayer.
Let us pray. Praise the Father. Again, we want to thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. We, Lord, do pray that you be with this country, be with this board. We have so many challenges, so many things have been changed, and it's a different world, Lord. Uprost in the Lord in this world, Lord, and we pray that you calm, as you have the ability to calm so much if we only trust. Lord, I pray that you do guide us. Lord, we want to educate children. We want children to be back in school, to be with their friends. We want teachers to be able to teach and to do the jobs that they chose, so chose this career, gracious career, bountiful career, that they have done. A wonderful job, Lord, and we pray that you give us the ability to do this again. Lord, we pray that you keep us safe. Lord, I do pray that these decisions that this board has to make, sometimes can be hard, sometimes can be difficult, will not be pleasing to all, Lord, but we pray your guidance upon all decisions and that we do the best that we can do so that we can continue to be the best educated system and to educate children in the best ways possible. Lord, we pray your guidance and your direction. We will always give you the praise and the glory for that all that we do and that you do for us. Guide us and direct us. We love you, Lord, and thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Under announcements, our next regular board meeting will be held here at the Education Center at seven o'clock, October the 12th. We also have our NCSBA virtual Fall Law Conference coming up, October 7th through the 9th. It'll all be online. We also have been informed that the annual conference for NCSBA will be, NCSBA will be virtual this year, and I'm still checking on the dates, but I think it's like a Wednesday, the 4th or 5th of November through Friday, and so there's several days of that conference. And there's some really good breakout sessions I've heard and some speakers, and I know that the NSBA, the National School Board Association President, will be a keynote speaker for the opening ceremony. I've heard that.
One good thing, Mr. Chairman, not being interrupting, but on the conference this year, you know, breakout sessions, we always have to make decisions which one we're going to. This year it would be virtually. I was just reading that online yesterday from Dr. Dunlap and the association. We'll get to go to all of them this year, so you won't have to choose. You'll get to, you'll get to, this is every one of the breakout sessions, so you're well-educated.
Are there any other announcements from board members? Okay. Under agenda adjustments, I've been informed by our Building and Grounds Committee Chair, Dr. Rogers, that they do have one item that they would like to add. We'll add that just prior to the financial reports. So it'd be right prior to 17. We'll add one item from Building and Grounds, and I do know that we have one adjustment that we need to make, and we'll do that just prior to the Building and Grounds, and that is the vote on when and where, or if we return to in-person learning. So that will be added prior to the Building and Grounds, right before 17. Are there any other additions that we haven't done?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to add one item to the financial.
Finance, okay.
Yes.
So I add it in your regular section there, Mr. Clark. That'd be okay?
Ten-four, yes.
Okay. Is there any objections to any of these adjustments? Okay.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that the agenda be approved as amended.
Okay. I'll second the motion from Mr. Jimmy Rogers, the second of Mr. Francis. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those who vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have Ms. Elisa Glantz.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Nolte, Dr. Putnam, Ms. Parker, members of the board. I was asked to tell a little bit about, it's called an Entre Ed grant that several of our teachers in the county participated in. It allowed 10 hours of PD credit, and they also received a $100 gift card just for participating. The topics that they covered, and they done this on their own time, was entrepreneurship education, entrepreneur mindset, design thinking, aligning entrepreneurship in the classroom, America's Entrepreneurial Schools Initiative, and creating your own entrepreneurial lessons. Carol Douglas is the one that put me and Jeff Haney in on this, and we invited all the teachers to sign up to, for this. And we did have 10 of our teachers sign up for it, and Carol sent me back this, which I thought was really good. The grant targeted select districts in West Virginia, Virginia, Tennessee, Kentucky, and Ohio, and our six Western North Carolina districts. Criteria for the grant was based on coal mining impact on communities. Our six districts fit the criteria. Fifty-two districts in these six states were representative. Sixty-one teachers from these districts completed the course. Out of those 50, only 61. What was really good, 50 of them was from Western North Carolina. 10 was from Haywood County alone, and then six was CTE teachers that we, that got to participate in this. And the teachers that participated in this was Adrian Howard, Brandy Matthews, Noel Castoder, Barry Feldman, Jennifer Cody, Farish Rogers, Amanda Wales, Ron Hunley, Sally Hunley, and Duane Squires. So they actually learned a lot. They all was rewarded money for it. They got PD credit, and then they'll be actually, this was Tier One. When Tier Two comes out, I feel that they all will participate again on the next level. They really enjoyed the course, and it was a good experience, and it was free for the county. So we didn't have to pay for, pay for them to get a 10 something.
Very good.
I was just doing that for y'all's information.
Thank you very much, Elisa.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Next, we have Dr. Putnam with some special recognition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, very honored and privileged tonight to recognize the first success in a pay structure that y'all approved some time ago that allowed upward movement and a greater earnings opportunity for our maintenance folks. And tonight, I'm going to ask Josh Mees to come in and recognize one of his crew leads that work with, work in maintenance and tell you a little bit about what he's done.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. Want to recognize Adam Robison. Adam has been with the school system for 13 years. Adam works keeping all the schools cool and warm. One thing that I learned real quick when I come this year was just how many freezers we had and colders that take care of our food system and through child nutrition, and he's done an outstanding job. And it's past week, I believe it was, Adam paced his test, which will allow Haywood County schools to be able to purchase equipment sometimes and not have to rely on a contractor to purchase that, those items. So thank you for the pay structure. This will help save money down the road for Haywood County schools.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank the board for allowing us the opportunity, allowing me the opportunity to take a chance to better myself in the maintenance field, so I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for making the effort.
Adam wanted to sing a song, right, Adam? He loves recognition.
I could tell he was eager to do that. Next, we have Dr. Putnam as well.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to recognize Haywood Rotary and Waynesville Rotary, again have continued their mission to make our buses and our bus stops safer. They've contributed $8,000 again this year, and with about $1,000 on the part of the school system, we will be able to outfit three buses with complete six-camera systems to include stop arm cameras for those who violate stop arms. So we're very pleased, and I just wanted to recognize those two groups. Again, that's Haywood Rotary and Waynesville Rotary for their generous contribution toward making our transportation routes safer.
Thank you very much, Rotary Clubs, for your generous donations, and I'm sure they'll be put to good use, as you said, with the camera systems. That's great. Next, we have Dr. Nolte.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, just a little advertisement for additional Rotary support. This coming Saturday, at the three Ingalls locations in Haywood County, they will be collecting dry food goods to help us with our food closet that is so very much needed every year, but especially during the COVID-19 pandemic, when a lot of people have been out of work. So if you're bored on Saturday, go by one of those locations and help out those three Rotary Clubs. We'll recognize them again later. After they've done the event, we have a little more information about that. Just wanted to share that with you. Also, we would like to recognize at this time our school nutrition department and for the fine work that they have done, especially during COVID. Allison could not be here this evening, but I asked her if I could share this recognition with you all, and we'll make sure the word gets out to school food service employees. We received last month, on the 20th, on August the 20th, a letter from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, the Food Distribution Division, and from the director, and the letter reads as follows. Dear Superintendent, I would like to inform you that, inform you that your school nutrition director, Allison Francis, spent 100% of the federal entitlement funds allocated to your school system in the National School Lunch Program for the 2019-20 year. It goes on to say a few other nice things. I want to also thank you for your support. There were other school systems that did not spend all their money, and they did not take on the aggressive food distribution that we did throughout last spring and into the summer. So thank you for providing the support that allowed Allison to make very efficient use of those funds. Thank you.
Dr. Nolte, be sure and let Ms. Francis know that we are proud of her accomplishment, and we do recognize her hard work and dedication.
Thank you. We'll do.
All right. I'd like to remind all board members that when we're live streaming, it's crucial that you speak clearly into your microphone so the listening audience can hear us. I know in the past I've been guilty. I had one snafu about a month or so ago where I forgot to turn my microphone on, so if you would speak up and speak clearly to the listening audience. We've been getting a few texts up here from different people saying, hey, you know, you need to speak more clearly and louder, so I'd give you that. And I've also been asked from our IT people to be sure and speak up as well. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the August 10th regular and closed session minutes. You've had an opportunity to look at the August 31st special call, open and closed session minutes, and the September 1st emergency call, closed session minutes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Rogers, a second from Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Francis?
Yes, sir.
My check, item 11.
Did I skip over one? Okay, open session. Someone sign up for the open session? Okay, thank you. I didn't think I saw anybody here other than the reporters, so I didn't know. So thank you for that reminder. Is Ms. Stevenson going or?
She's remoting in, Mr. Francis.
Remoting in, that's great. So at this time, we'll have Ms. Remote, Brandy Stevenson.
Hey.
Hey, Brandy.
Chairman, Franklin, members of the board, tonight I bring to you a services agreement between the EC Department and WCU's audiological services. Ms. King, can you pull that up? After the closure with mountain media, or mountain audiology, we had to find a replacement that could offer audiological services to our EC students. So WCU, their department's going to offer training to our speech-language therapists and conduct, they're going to train them how to conduct hearing screenings, and then they're also going to do follow-up visits for our students that fail those hearing screenings, so we'll be able to offer them the care that they need in terms of hearing services.
Anyone have any questions about the agreement, the contract? Okay. We'll need a motion for approval.
Oh, wait.
Mr. Burnett has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ann Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Jason Hines.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your consideration, item number 14 is a contract renewal for Pierce Group benefits. This is an independent benefits company that provides a bank of ancillary benefits in addition to the state health plan, things like life insurance, cancer policies, bridge policies, flexible benefits plans, and so forth. They provide an excellent product, and I have often said to our employees in the eight years now that I've been doing this job as HR Director, I've heard a lot of concerns about a lot of things, but never Pierce Group benefits. I've never received one phone call. If there's a problem, our employees call them and it gets fixed. So I recommend, and I think the administration would recommend approval of this contract for another three years.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Pierce Group benefits as presented. Okay, Mr. Carpenter's made a motion, second by Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
I'd like to echo Mr. Hines's thing. I think this group has done a wonderful job for our employees, and, yes, sir, and like you, you don't hear any complaints about supplemental benefits.
I know, yes, they take care of it. You're right.
Nice people to work with.
Absolutely.
And very professional. They are good people. Any other comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hines. Next, we have a NCSBA web hosting for policies contract. Mr. Dr. Putnam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what I have before you is a web hosting service offered by the North Carolina School Board Association. The total cost, if you were to approve yearly, would be $3,450. Those funds would come directly out of my auxiliary funds or ancillary funds that I use for drug testing and other things, so there's sufficient funds there to cover it. It's already a part of a budgeted line item. This would become effective November 1. There's a $250 initial development fee. A little bit about this service, with this service and in conjunction with your ongoing custom policy, a policy updates subscription, they would clean up, finalize, and post policies online, as well as maintain electronic and online versions of your current policy manual. They also send us any administrative regulations and other policy manual materials you decide post as well. Also, we would be provided with a hyperlink to the online policy manual that could be embedded on our local site. I was explaining to someone earlier, so essentially what this does is eliminate a pass-through of about three different people at least two times. So when the policy committee meets and makes recommendations or revisions put before the full board, it has to be sent to Mr. O'Rourke, who is the school board attorney's representative. He then looks at it and says, these are legal and lawful changes, and sends it back to us. So we then have to post it up under policies, under revision. So then, once final approval ever comes, that has to be pulled back down, submitted to Mr. O'Rourke, and said, here is the approved policy, as well as destroying any old copies of the policy so that we don't get them confused. Whereas with this web hosting service, we would simply be able to contact Mr. O'Rourke, and it would be housed right there with him. It would have, the policy under revision would have been available through a link through this web hosting service the entire time, as well as policies up for second read, first read, and final policies. It also gives us greater functionality in being able to search through policies. If you look at athletics, for example, there are references to about five or six other policies that include athletics in them, whether it be participation or what makes them eligible curriculally. You would be able to do a more complete search by using this web hosting because it links all those references to a keyword search like athletics, and we cert, we do not currently have that functionality. So that's why I would bring to all of you the idea of web hosting through the North Carolina School Board Association. Mr. Rogers serves on the policy committee. Anything you want to add, Mr. Rogers?
No, I think it will, it will definitely streamline the process, and then again, like we said before, these policies we receive from NCSBA, which went their programs because it's up to date online immediately. This also makes it quicker, and like Dr. Putnam mentioned, sometimes we can lose, we may have an old policy sitting there, we revise it, but we didn't get that process of, by the time you say it travels between Ms. Swanger back from the policy committee, Ms. Swanger then back to Jim O'Rourke, then back several times, that kind of gets, you know, could get something mixed up in the shuffle. And again, this will be live. It'll be right there for you, so it's, it's just streamline the process. It's, it's beneficial for our system to have this, and also the public, then like you say, instead of looking up online, you see board policies, policy under revision, sometimes that can be confusing. This way, it's, like I say, that keyword of joining everything together that's associated with that will be very beneficial, very helpful. That's all I have to add. So at this time, though, Mr. Chairman, I will present this as a motion. We approve this web hosting for, for the NCSBA.
We have a motion. I hear a second. Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Do we still, no, we have a contract with NCSBA with, they're supposed to be sending us current policies already, so shouldn't those policies already been approved by somebody when we get them for approval with, for us? So why are we sending them back to Raleigh to be approved a second time when they're supposed to be approving them before they send them to us? If we're, if we've got this other contract out there?
Yep. The, the other part of that, and it's, that's a good question. So the other service that the North Carolina School Board Association provides to us is spring and fall updates. They will make recommended policy revisions. However, they will not host or post those policies. That's a, and a lot of times when those policies come in, they are in fact making just a recommendation, and sometimes they're making a legal requirement change within them. And so our, it's the charge of the policy committee to look at that and go, yeah, we think we'll use this recommendation or not. It doesn't match our, our current practice, and we like our current practice. Obviously, the legal requirements, we would always make those changes. There's no latitude there. But what happens is, once we make those changes, then we have to send it back, Mr. O'Rourke, otherwise they don't even know that we've changed the policy.
I see, okay.
With this web hosting, we don't have to send it back. We notify him of the changes, and he houses the policy.
Okay.
And they, they host it on the web.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
So are you saying that when someone looks at the policy on our school board page, that sort of, they're hosting, they're sort of taking care of it on our web page, the policy in that capacity?
That's correct. And the other thing it gives you, and I failed to point this out, is the fact that, what precipitated all this? We wanted a standalone athletics policy. We were, we were dealing with them on that, and they said, well, we can do that. And right now, you know that you will have an athletics policy, and I will know that you have an athletics policy. What Mr. O'Rourke pointed out to me is without the web hosting service, should that connection between either one of us change? He takes a different job, I take a different job, or, you know, any number of changes within either of our organizations? Well, we have the current understanding that a custom-created policy is there. Without the web hosting, somebody may have forgotten that was ever created, and we might fall out of compliance with our athletics policy because it wouldn't be updated or reflected. But the fact that they house it and they host it, if a legal change comes through that impacts athletics, it's going to be right there on their, on their web because they're hosting it for us. It's a way of, of, of keeping a constant reminder in front of both organizations should a change be needed. I just used athletics as, as an example.
Right. So if we want a custom policy for anything, and this board, because that's one of our functions, is policies, we make a policy for anything, we vote on it, we send it to him, he's going to post it on this. That's, that's the way you're saying it's working.
That's correct.
And then if we make changes to that, or make a change to any of his policies that we vote on, he's just, it's just like a live stream, as long as we're not getting out of just like the same thing. We make policies, they're making all kinds of suggestions, they're still making suggestions with our policy. We don't have to take it or not.
That's right.
Our policies are our policies. That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
And this just gives you the, a place for it to be housed always, and so if a legal change comes through that impacts one of those policies... And so, if a legal change comes through that impacts one of those policies you've created, then they will know. "Oh, Haywood County has a very unique policy in regards to this subject and it is impacted by this new law." As it is right now, they may or may not know that we've created.
I don't, okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So, this thirty-four fifty is a yearly?
Yes, sir.
Right.
And then there's a two fifty, uh, initial setup, uh, initial development fee. And that was supposed to be seventeen fifty, but, um, I use persuasion.
Well, now, just looking through it, I'm assuming our board attorney has looked at the terms. Uh, is this a yearly, let's see, na, 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 na. Is this a yearly thing from year to year? Or is this, we pay them and it goes for five years, two years?
It's year to year and we cancel it anytime.
Okay.
It's a service or fee, it's not actually a contract.
Well, we're paying, so anytime you're paying, it's whether a contract or not, it's a fee, but you're still paying to make sure that they hadn't. I mean, I've looked through it, but I'm not a lawyer. So, I mean, I don't know.
They're pretty good.
I would say this, that a majority of the school systems across the state do use this service. And, um, what I would suggest we do if we pass this tonight is ask Mr. Smathers to take a look at it. If there's any hiccups, just bring it back to us, Mr. Smathers, and then we'll take another hard look at it before we send it on down, okay?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's a great thing. I mean, if we're sort of doing everything, it's like the way the world's going. It's quick, people's able to do it, so it sounds great. I just don't want to make sure that we don't get stuck in something that another board might not like, so.
It's an annual agreement.
It's also a thing that the board might like because if we're not here, they know it's there, so it's, it can also go, that could be a two-way street. And if I need to amend that, uh, motion to, uh, with, with our board attorney's approval.
I think it's understood.
Understood, so.
Is that correct? All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just make one, one more, but, uh, yeah, I've noticed, looking through our policies, just like I said, take just athletics as our example. You may have athletics under po- uh, three thousand policies, four thousand policies, seven thousand policies. This way, you can sit there and say, "Oh, oh, yeah, I don't have to look at all five of those." And it takes a while to look at them, you can say, "Oh, they're all five right here. This is that category that you're sub- searching for." It's just another simplicity of, of looking through policies, if you so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Now, the, the policy train coming at you.
All right. Mr. Kirkpatrick wants me to stand up here and read every one, right? Slowly. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for, uh, for your review and first read, we have policy seventy, seventy-two forty. That's, uh, drug-free and alcohol-free workplace, revises section D to align reporting requirements with those in policy seventy-three hundred. We also have policy seventy-two forty-one, drug and alcohol testing of commercial motor vehicle operators, revises paragraph B four to clarify the prohibition on post-accident alcohol use by CDL holders. We also have policy seventy-nine hundred, which is, uh, a resignation policy, adds a new section B to address the notice period for resignation. We have policy thirteen-ten slash four thousand two. Uh, it's parental involvement. It updates the policy in the text at paragraph C four and in the cross-reference, corrects punctuation in section A. Policy sixteen-hundred, governing principle, professional development, updates a policy title in the text. Thirty-one oh-two, online instruction, it updates the legal references. Uh, policy thirty-two twenty-seven slash seventy-three twenty-two, webpage development, to reduce the frequency of updates, deletes references in section B two to a specific section of technology use policy. Policy thirty-three hundred, the school calendar and time for learning, updates hyperlink in the legal references. Policy thirty-four oh-five, students at risk of academic failure, updates the other resources section as some of the resources listed are no longer available. Policy thirty-four seventy slash forty-three oh-five, alternative learning programs in schools, updates a hyperlink in the legal references. Policy thirty-six ten, counseling programs, updates the policy title in the text and in the cross-references. Policy forty-one fifty-two, unsafe school choice transfer, updates a hyperlink in the legal references. Uh, policy forty-two ten, release of students from school, updates a policy title in the text. Policy fifty forty, news media relation, deletes outdated legal reference. Policy sixty-three oh-six, school bus idling, updates a hyperlink in the legal references. Almost there. Policy seventy-five hundred, workday and overtime, updates a hyperlink in the legal references. Policy seventy-five oh-five, compliance with State Board of Education employment policy, corrects a typo in the last sentence of the text and updates the hyperlink in legal references. Policy seventy-five ten, leave, updates a hyperlink in the text and legal references. Policy seventy-five forty, voluntary shared leave, updates a hyperlink in the legal references. Policy seventy-eight oh-five, superintendent evaluation, updates a hyperlink in the text and legal references. And finally, uh, uh, policy eighty-three fifty, fixed assets inventory, adds a legal reference pertaining to useful life guidelines. And those are all your policies for first read.
Those will all be tabled for thirty days or until the next, uh, regular board meeting for approval, for public, uh, comment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next, we have for approval, uh, these have already been tabled for thirty days. Policy thirty-four ten, testing and assessment program. Policy forty-one ten, um, policy forty-two seventy, six slash sixty-one forty-five. Policy forty-three twenty-five, and policy sixty-three twenty-five. And I didn't read anything about those because they've been posted for thirty days.
Correct.
Everybody's aware of those policies.
Can I make a motion? We approve the policies for second reading.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick here, second. Say it with Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
Thank you.
Next, I think we were going to add to the agenda, the discussion about, um, returning to, uh, in-person learning. Dr. Nock?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, uh, as you know, we had quite a lengthy, uh, discussion during our work session on Thursday. Um, and the response to returning to in-person learning has been overwhelming. It's just been frankly overwhelming. We received six thousand six hundred and sixty-four responses, uh, which is a substantial percentage of our students. Uh, seventy-three point nine percent of those responses were a request by the families for their child, uh, to enter in-person, um, learning through a blended approach of in-person and, uh, some remote learning. The other twenty-six point one percent of the responses were for remote-only instruction. As we've said a number of times, uh, since late summer, that when we were ready, uh, we intended to provide both of those to the best of our ability. Remote only for the percentage that wants that. And then certainly we want to provide the overwhelming response of blended learning, uh, that includes, uh, half in-person learning. We are just frankly very excited about that response. I think all of us who've worked in Haywood County schools, uh, whether it's a long time like me or if you're a brand-new person, we're excited to know that people want to return to school in-person. And frankly, school is not the same without students, faculty and staff in the building. And, uh, we're just very excited about the response. On July twenty-second, uh, we met and, uh, this board selected Plan B, option F. I think that was a very wise selection that would let us, uh, try a number of things. We tried some small groups of in-person that has gone really, really well. And the goal of selecting that plan is that we would, uh, open up for in-person learning as early as September the twenty-first. That was our goal. Uh, unfortunately, we did have a cyber attack, um, about two weeks ago. And that shut down our communication services and our network services and our ability to get our inter- uh, intent information out and really put us behind about a week. And for that reason and that reason only, uh, I would recommend to you that we open up for in-person blended learning with a A-week, B-week rotation beginning on Monday, September the twenty-eighth.
You recommended the September the twenty-eighth versus the twenty-first?
Yes, sir, because we were behind because of the attack.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions or, uh, I know we talked a lot on Thursday, but I'm sure there's a lot more, um, to share in the coming days.
Um, I know there's a lot of parents, there are a lot of concern about the communication of how this is going to look and how it's going to work. And I would suggest that if we do delay the opening, that we do as much as possible to communicate, as much as we can, uh, what it'll look like as best we can and what, uh, what it won't look like. Uh, I've had a lot of folks call about, you know, would it be better to do Monday, Tuesday, then off on Wednesday? I think you've looked at that as well, maybe explain why you're not talking about doing that situation and...
Well, we've talked about that at length many, many times. Um, one of the things that we're dealing with is fifteen schools and frankly lots of different teacher licensure. Uh, regardless of when you start, there is a lot to be managed. And, uh, if you go a couple of days on and a day off and a couple of days on, you're really only getting about four direct in-person days, uh, every couple of weeks. And with a week on and a week off, uh, you have those five days and then you front-load and have some opportunities for students to connect with teachers, uh, in other ways that, that second week. Uh, you, um, so, you know, that's the reason, certainly, uh, we could, we could do the two on and one off and two on, but I think we would be able to manage the overall operation better. I think busing will be much easier to understand if we're a week on and we're a week off.
I would think the busing thing would al- almost be a nightmare.
Yeah, no matter what you do.
With that, I mean, it's going to be a nightmare no matter what, but...
Yes, sir.
I think it's going to be more of a nightmare, two days on, one day off, two days on, and then the confusion of who's, who walked where and when. Yeah, unfortunately, this is, uh, unprecedented times and, uh, there's not a good answer for all of it.
No, sir, and, and without belaboring, uh, you know, any discussion that you all might have, and we talked a little bit about this on Thursday, and I know a lot of people may not have been able to listen to that live stream. Certainly, people can go back and listen to it later. Um, but many of us believed early on that Plan B was designed not to work. We were very public about that. I was and other school systems were. But over half the, or about half of the school systems in the state are embarking on some form of Plan B. And I think we should, uh, even though it is a, uh, imperfect design, even though it will look very differently at different schools with different ages of students based upon teacher licensure and the way that we do things, we think doing the in-person instruction is the right thing to do and we hope we can do more of it in the future. Uh, we would, would again ask for the week delay because essentially we were shut down for a week and that put us behind.
I would like to make a motion that we take a recommendation of Dr. Bill to start the in-class learning on the twenty-eighth, which obviously I would love to go back to week first. But his recommendation to go back the twenty-eighth as presented to us by Dr. Bill.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, do I hear a second?
Second.
Say it with Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
The only discussion I'd like to have, and I think maybe it's been answered multiple times, but obviously we don't have cla- or group A in class. Then we were going to have, group B will be virtual. Now, we know that some schools is going to have more students coming back than others by some of the surveys from schools. Now, the virtual people, are they still going to be doing the same stuff that the A groups are doing? Or are they going to be taught by another group of teachers doing the same thing, but they're just going to be taught by another group of teachers?
Yes, sir, that is the question in the community and I'll do my best to answer that question. And we talked a little bit about that on Thursday, but certainly, um, the A and B students will alternate weeks in front of their teachers. That other week, they'll have some instruction front-loaded and there will be some opportunity for them, um, to have contact with their teacher and, uh, make sure that they're doing the right kinds of things. The, the other group, the remote only, a little over tw- twenty-six percent right now, uh, would have different teachers. Um, we will not ask any teacher to do a A rotation or a B rotation plus the remote only. We don't think that's fair to our teachers. You all talked about last Thursday, making sure that we take care of our faculty and staff. They have done, in, uh, in my mind, just a remarkable job. I get chill bumps literally, um, right now while I'm thinking about it, making a dramatic shift in about three days in March for supplemental instruction. And then, when we entered this school year, it wasn't supplemental anymore. It was good, remote instruction, and they get, they seem to get better at that every day. So, we wouldn't make any teacher do that. We have had a few teachers ask us if they can. Uh, and in, in very small groups or individuals, we might let them. Uh, I had, uh, a request from Central Haywood, uh, and I think because of the nature of their school and the type of school, they might do both and they have asked to do that, similar with the, um, early college. Outside of those two situations, it would probably be a teacher here and a teacher, a teacher there, and they've asked to do it. And I suspect that would be, um, more of a high school request because of the nature of the courses. That would be much harder to pull off, even if a teacher wanted to do it at the elementary or middle school level. But it's, that is the question, yeah. And we just don't want to overwhelm our teachers by expecting anyone to do that.
Well, and I think that's probably the main question, I mean, on everybody's mind is, uh, the teachers. And I would just like to say even before we take a final vote that, I mean, obviously I've always wanted my kids in school. Now, I'm one person, but I am a, a father of two kids. And I appreciate what the teachers, custodians, bus drivers, everybody that is making this work, it's not perfect. I mean, nobody ever said it was going to be. But I would just like to thank them for doing what they do. I mean, I know, I can't speak for the whole board, but I know that myself, it's, it's been hard making a decision what to do, A, B, C, D, whatever you want to call it. I mean, I think it's just put us in a terrible situation that we've got to just belt up, pull up, pull up our pants and go at it. I mean, that's what we've got to do. So, but I would just like to say thank you to all of them and thank... So, but I would just like to say thank you to all of them, and thank you to the administration for doing what you have done, especially between the little situation we had with the ransomware. But you have done a great job, and I appreciate everything you have done, all the way down to the custodians and bus drivers. Thank you.
It's certainly a group effort.
Right.
Throughout the organization.
I've got a, maybe a question or statement. I don't know where I'll end up with it. I'd like to echo a little bit of what Mr. Kirkpatrick said, in that our teachers and the staffs at the school have done absolutely a remarkable job to reinvent Haywood County Schools since March. Nothing has been easy for them. I know that they have worked extremely long hours and weekends and everything else that it took to get us to the place where we're at least talking about remote learning at this time. According to our own survey, we've got 73.9% of people telling us that we've got to return to school as quickly as possible. And I'm of that same mindset. We've got to return to school as quickly as possible and do it well. With that said, given the fact that our teachers and principals have worked so diligently in the face of a whole lot of things, and I understand that as of today, or a little while ago before the meeting, that a majority of the schools, nine in fact, if I counted right, have requested that we wait and don't return on the 21st. And like I said, we've received a lot of phone calls of parents wanting their child back in school. We've received a lot of emails from teachers, various teachers across multiple schools this week stating that they're still confused about some things, how everything's going to roll out, et cetera. I guess the bottom line is, you know, we brag on our teachers when everything's going well and we're scoring in the top of the state, and we know that they are professional people that always go above and beyond, and I do believe that we need to take care of them. And if we've got nine out of 15 schools saying, "We need five more days," I don't want to return on the 28th, I don't want to return on the 21st. But I don't know how you ignore those professionals. That's been my dilemma all weekend and all day, is how do you ignore those folks that are telling you, they're professionals, and we need just a little more time, we need five more days to get everything flowing well? So, it's very difficult to ignore them, and I believe the last thing that we want to do is send our county's children back into a state of confusion. So, maybe during these five days, we clear up any communications problems that we have. Every person in the school system at every school needs to understand just exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it, and it ought to be crystal clear to absolutely everybody by the end of next week. So, again, thank you, teachers. Thank you for what you've done. If you're telling us you need five more days, then I guess we need to listen to that.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I don't think they would have made that request had we not had the attack, but I concur. We need to let them get as ready as we can be. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Kirkpatrick and Dr. Rogers. That's, I will, you back on that, too. These teachers, like you say, we do have the greatest teachers in the state as far as I'm concerned. And again, with Dr. Rogers, I want to go to the 21st really bad, but we're not going to overlook their request because they are the professionals out there. Still lots of confusion. Like Dr. Rogers said, we just need to make sure we clear up all the communications and let them know what their responsibilities, how we do it. I mean, even down to the cleaning, who's going to clean the rooms, how's it going to be done? And they are, they're taking extra steps, and I know that, and they're arriving early at school. They're going beyond their hours of normal duty, but that's what we have to do in a pandemic. We all are trying to do more, that we have to do it because we want these children to be educated the best we can get them. And we have great families, we have great communities, and great, great, great area that we're living in here. And I think that that's, again, I applaud them for everything they've done. I applaud you as our administrators in leading us and getting us through the pandemic. Mr. Kirkpatrick said, too, yeah, cyberware attackers, dag on it. I hope we find you one these days, or I hope somebody finds you and puts a missile where it don't need to be. But, yeah, we really, we really do thank you guys, and like I say, we've just got to keep good, open communications. Our teachers, like I say, they have questions, let's be forward, let's ask them and answer them, and do the best we can do to carry on through this thing and get these children back in school. And thank everybody in this whole county, other organizations that's pitched in and helped, and hotspots, whatever, but we thank everybody that's in there, and we're all in it together, and we'll all stay in it together. So, let's roll on. So, I'll look for the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Mr. Clark?
I just want to, just with what everybody else said, just thank you, everybody, for all the hard work. And I just do want to let the parents and everybody know, the teachers, that we do appreciate the input and the calls and the emails, texts, everything. Without your input, we cannot make an informed decision, and we don't take it lightly, and I want everybody to know that. Some people have been very passionate about it, and we are listening, I want you to know that, and we appreciate everything that the parents, teachers, administration, everybody. And I hope that we will have and provide everything you guys need, resources and everything. So, thank you, and thanks, everybody. Thanks to the board, too.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, I have a comment. I would like to thank the teachers, every staff member all the way throughout. I just want the public to know that the administration, the teachers have taken a lot of precautions for safety, temperature checks, keeping masks on kids, social distancing, cleaning, and, you know, we take that very seriously, and our goal is to get everybody back in school, not only get them back in school, but do so safely. So, please, follow all instructions, try to talk to your children, make sure that they are following instructions, and again, thanks to all the teachers and every staff person, and it's going to be a challenge.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Ms. Barrett.
Good luck, and Godspeed, as they say. There being no other questions or comments, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board. We'll get a communication out to the general community later this evening. My laptop is literally being wiped clean as we speak, but I hope to get it back a little later this evening, and we'll get a communication out. And we want one more transition.
Yeah.
We want a Plan A for schools and Phase 3 for the state, and when that comes, that'll take a little transition, but we're looking forward to that one because we want it to be the last one. But thank you for your support of our faculty and staff.
I think it's a great vote tonight, and I think that the message is that we need to make sure we're communicating as much as we can. I know there's a lot of unknowns, but I think there's a lot of questions as well. That's what I'm reading a lot these days. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Building and Grounds Chair, Dr. Rogers.
Mr. Chairman, Building and Grounds brings forth a motion to authorize the maintenance department to purchase a new truck, a cabin chassis, to replace the 2006 Ford F-250 that's used as a plumber's truck. The old truck was surplus at the last board meeting, so we bring this motion for them to purchase this new truck, with the purchase not to exceed $55,000.
Okay, we have a motion.
I second.
Second of Mr. Kirkpatrick. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you for the Building and Grounds and all the hard work they do. Thank you. Next, we have our Finance Chair, Mr. Ronnie Clark.
Mr. Chairman, I want to bring that the regular financial reports have been reviewed, and I want to bring them to a motion to be approved.
Okay, we have a motion from the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Clark, to the regular monthly financial reports. Do I hear a second? Second of Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You have one more item?
Yes, sir. I have the budget resolution for the year, fiscal year 2021, and I'm bringing it to be approved also to the full board.
Okay. We have a motion from the Finance Chair, Mr. Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So, Mr. Rogers, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I'd just like to make a comment. We do this every year as standard operating procedure, so it's nothing new that we're doing tonight. Just wanted to make a comment. Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else from Finance, Mr. Clark?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much for the hard work of the Finance Committee. Now, we have our Personnel from Dr. Nauti.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff and guests, at this time, I bring forth the personnel information that was discussed earlier in closed session. For your information, we have 13 separations from employment, five employee status changes, and four leave of absence. For your approval, we bring forth 25, excuse me, 28 employments, 30 employee status changes, 15 contracted services, four leave of absence, 14 employee coaches, five non-employee coaches, and one teacher contract. Miss?
I have five, but let me go back and count them real quick.
Five, yes, sir, five. Four under your information, five under your approval.
Okay. I need a motion. Ms. Barrett's made the motion to approve personnel as presented.
Taken.
Second, Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. I want to thank you for your work, too. I think you have embarked upon a record number of meetings in one year, and we still have some time to go.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one thing? I mean, you can go ahead. I just need one more question. Going back to virtual schools, that's a good thing about these little things right here. Sometimes people can ask questions before you get off in the live stream. Now, going back to students, Monday through Friday, that's in A group, teachers in B, or students online, now, will the teachers have a day to check what's happening in virtual? Or, once again, is the virtual students on in Group B that's not there? Are they being graded by a totally different teacher, I think, is sort of what?
No, the same teacher will do the A-group students when they're in front of the teacher or they're on their front-loaded week, and then the same teachers will do the B-group student while they're there in front of the teacher and while that group is not there. Now, the remote-only students will have a completely different person in almost every case.
I think that's where you're misstating Stephen.
Yeah, I think the question is, those, like, Group A is going to be in class, in school, and what is Group B doing at home? But they're going to be doing front-loaded work at home, so they may not be always on the computer, signing into the classroom. They're going to be doing work assigned to them in that prior week.
Assigned to them in advance.
Yeah, so they may not be online.
We do have, hope to have some opportunities for them to check in and communicate back and forth.
So, they...
Is that going to be built into the teacher's daily schedule?
Yeah, I think that may be probably what it boils down to. Are they going to have a day to check in on their virtual students, what's happened virtually?
Well, if we give them a day, then there's only four days of instruction in the week.
Okay, well, a day, but are they going to be given? Well, and that may be, we're going on something new, but they need to have some kind of time to start checking the virtual students, whether it's a...
Virtual students are a different group of students. They're a whole different...
But what I'm saying is... Let me let Ms. Barker address this because she's worked on it. She can probably explain it.
The Class B that's still going to be...
They're not online.
She can probably explain it to her better than I can.
Thank you, Chairman Francis, and members of the board, first of all, for hearing our teachers and understanding that week and what that did as far as our intense surveys. The number of students coming back or not has been critical to the individual plans of the school. So, if you're hearing, "Well, I don't know what my school's doing," that's because the numbers, the survey officials, certain numbers weren't in until Friday, although we shared preliminary numbers with you on Thursday. So, they had some tentative plans, but now they're having to really look at those numbers in a third grade or in a seventh-grade math and try to come up with their best system. I'm proud of Dr. Bill and our system because we have fought to keep our kids. We could have chosen an online platform early on, and we've said we want to try to keep our kids with us. At the same time, we do not want to kill our teachers. With that being said, Mr. Kirkpatrick, there will be schools and plans where there are, and Dr. Bill said a few, there may be more than that. Some of our high schools may choose to remain where they're doing just kind of the same instruction. The kids come in, they have a laptop, they're signing in the first 15 minutes of the class. I know the high school principals are working through that right now. As far as the remote-only kids, while we're still blended, we'll still have remote kids, too. So, that will be something that they will look at as far as, do we need to, as far as an elementary school, maybe we need to assign. Maybe at one of our larger elementary schools, there are not, there's so many remote kids, it's a classroom-per-grade level. They might can assign a teacher just to those remote kids. As far as the A/B goes, a couple of things. They will either be having that face-to-face kind of instruction every day, or if it's a CT class, that's probably not going to work as well. So, they'll probably have some online, you know, the week that they're there, and then the next week, they'll probably be doing more like bookwork and follow-up and things like that. They could do some recorded demonstrations, but it's harder in a hands-on class. That's why these individual plans at the schools are crucial, and principals are really working to try to get the right people with our kids right now. Somebody said crystal clear. It should be crystal clear to our parents by the end of the next week, but it is going to be different at every school based on who they are. The next change will come, and Dr. Bill keeps telling me, you know, there will be another change. If we get to return to all in-person instruction, then there will be a remote-only group, and then we will have to look at maybe some different things at that time for remote-only, but most of our schools are trying to kill two birds with one stone and do that now, and then when we go to all, you know, the all-remote kids will still be under the same umbrella, but in some of our smaller schools, that's really hard. So, it is messy, it is hard work, but we're trying to give them the best teachers that we've got under the circumstances with no additional teachers and things like that given to us from the state, but a mandate to offer both, and we want our parents to have that choice. So, we're trying to make that work. So, thank you again on behalf of the teachers and administrators for your vote tonight, and that will help us get some good plans in place. Did that answer your question? and that will help us get some good plans in place. Did that answer your question?
Clear as mud.
I think, yeah, I, I understand. I just still think, I think it boils down to what most of the board members have said here. Before we start back on twenty-eighth, let's make sure the communication is out in the public that is not as dirty, muddy water.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we will work on that. The only thing, and we tried to talk about this on Thursday, is it may not look the same at two different schools.
That's correct.
Because of teacher licensure and availability and the number of students at that school, but we should be able to make that very clear for each school, for the students assigned at each school.
One comment. At this point, we're not gonna be videotaping a face-to-face teacher and then later posting it up online or letting them live stream.
We do have teachers videoing lessons at this time. Some of them do video for review purposes, or some of them like to have that daily, um, if they've got kids at home and they're saving that to a jump drive if they don't have access. So, we have been doing that.
Okay.
And I think we would see more of that as we move to, uh, trying to keep the kids with a teacher. It may be some more once everybody's back in the building. If we're under Plan A, we may have to use more of that model, Mr. Francis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. I know we could go all night, but any other questions? If not, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.